Trouble you to get the door?
I can do it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if your back was in or out. Looking good.
I almost just did it on my way in.
About a few minutes ago. You tap on the door for Jimmy? Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Currier. I serve you as the Chair of the Nashua Zoning Board. This is the Nashua Zoning Board. First, if anybody has a cellphone, I ask if you would please put it on silent mode or turn it off so we don't get interrupted during the meeting. And before we get going, I'll spend a little bit of time going over our instructions. First, again, my name is Jack Currier. I serve as the Chair. To my right is Mary Ellen McKay. She serves as our clerk. Going around the table is Mr. J.P. Boucher, who is our Vice Chair. Then we have full members, Robert Shaw and Mr. Steve Lionell, and alternate member Kathy Vitale. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk. He's, uh, serves on the city staff as a Deputy Planning Manager. Can everybody hear me okay? Great, thanks. So what we're here tonight is we're here to hear variances and special exceptions, and there's a slight difference between those two. And I'll spend a moment to describe what those are because by state law, this board is required to hear five criteria for a variance. And I will tick through the five criteria. First is that the, um, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three is the spirit, I'm sorry, substantial justice is done. Four is that the values of surrounding properties are dimin- not diminished. And five, that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So they, uh, all landowners in Nashua are compelled to oblige by this thick book of zoning, the zoning code. This board does not make the zoning code. We here request to deviate from it. And variances are clear deviations from this. And by state law, the members voting tonight need to hear the five criteria that I just spoke to. Criteria other than that is not to be considered. And if there's, you know, testimony to criteria other than that five criteria, I'll remind you that by law, we need to stick to the five criteria. We're also hearing tonight a couple of cases for special exceptions, and a special exception is slightly different than a variance. Special exceptions also have five criteria, and I'll read those. First is that the use is listed in the table of uses. And what that means is our code book specifically allows some special exceptions. And what we're hearing tonight does meet, is listed in the table of uses. Number two is that the requested use or activity will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number three is that the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system. Number five is that any special regulations for the use activity set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And we'll get into that in the special exceptions, in particular with accessory use dwellings, which we have before us tonight. And then the fifth of the five criteria for a special exception is that the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood, not be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. So that's the five criteria for a special exception. If anybody doesn't have it already, we have a list of the agenda on the table on your left side of the room as you face me. So if anybody doesn't have an agenda, feel free to hop up and get a copy for yourself. I will say there's one adjustment to this agenda, and the first case, which is two to four Henry David Drive, which is the White Family Ventures, that has been postponed by the applicant. So is there anybody here for two to four Henry Clay Drive? No one's here for that anyway, so nobody made a wasted trip here tonight. Other than that first case being postponed, we have cases two through six, which we will go through likely in order. So a couple of other points I'd like to say, um, that if any, uh, there's two components to this meeting. First, there's the public hearing where we hear from you, and then there's the public meeting where we as a board deliberate on what we've heard. So on the first component of the meeting, the public hearing, our bylaws state that we will hear testimony in this order. First, the applicant will speak, and the applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. We actually have a timer here that'll count down from 15 minutes. It'll be green for the first 14 minutes, yellow from minute 14 to 15, and then turn red. If you're still speaking, I'm likely to terminate the speaking because your time is up. So bear in mind that applicants have up to 15 minutes to speak. After the applicant has spoken, anybody else with favorable testimony to the application will have up to five minutes to present their case. After all favorable testimony is presented, then any and all interested parties that have questions, concerns, or testimony in opposition to the applicant will have up to five minutes to present their case. After any opposition, any and all opposition is heard, the applicant will have five minutes back at the microphone to address the opposition. And then finally, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will have a final five minutes to address what the applicant said. So that's the order of testimony by our bylaws that we hear each case tonight during the public hearing. When the, and then at that point, the public hearing will end and the public meeting will begin, which is where the six of us will deliberate on the case and are likely to take a vote, which could be positive, negative, or perhaps a table to a later date. At this point, if sometimes members recuse themselves, if they might have some association with the case, at this point with five full members, it'll be the five full members voting with Ms. Vitale participating but not voting unless one of the members were to step down during the case, then Ms. Vitale would be participating and voting. And per our, uh, per state laws, there need to be three or more affirmative votes to grant a special exception or a variance. Also, I ask that because we have testimony one at a time, I, we ask if folks in the audience could be quiet, and we, so we only have the conversation coming in to one person speaking into the mic. This meeting is recorded in three venues. It's recorded on TV. And I need to thank right now Jimmy, he's the man behind the door who's working the cameras, and this will be transmitted in a few days on Nashua Public TV. This is also recorded digitally in audio format that in a few days you can stream at gonashua new hampshire.gov. It used to be gonashua.com, but I, I forget the website, but if you hit Go Nashua, it'll still direct you there. So you could tick through and go to the ZBA and listen to an audio stream of these, of this proceeding. And then the third venue it's recorded in is a written transcription, and that's the actual final, uh, and official transcription because should a case proceed to court, that's what the court uses. So because we record a meeting as such, I ask, we only have one person speaking at a time, and it must be in the microphone because otherwise it won't get picked up, and I'll be recognizing who's ever going to be testifying to come next to the microphone. Uh, are, we also ask that all testimony and questions are directed to us, the board. If you say have questions to an applicant and you're in opposition, please give those questions to us. If you have them, we probably have them, and we'll be asking that to the applicant when it's back at the mic. Uh, I like that format. I've seen other towns that do it other ways where, you know, folks can address each other, but I think it makes the conversation and the proceeding a little more difficult. So I ask that all questions and concerns are addressed to us, the board, and we'll get them answered for you. And then finally, if there's any, if any party feels aggrieved by whatever decision we've rendered, the next step would be to request a rehearing. So the rehearing request, you have up to 30 days. If you're interested in doing that, you could give Mr. Falk a call tomorrow. And also, because we have a 30-day by state law window of a rehearing request, any decision we render is essentially, the decision is made, but if we get a rehearing request, and if the board decides to rehear it, the decision we made is stayed. So you will be hearing me remind you that if your application is, say, approved, I will be reminding you that there's a 30-day timeout, so to speak, of which an appeal or a request to rehear could come in. If a rehearing request is submitted and we don't hear, decide to rehear the case, if you still felt aggrieved, your next step would be to take your matter or the matter to Hillsborough County Superior Court. So before we get going, are there any questions from anyone in the audience? I see one hand. If it's a short question, just say it, and I'll repeat it in the mic, so folk.
How long is a variance, first of all, for the project exactly?
Okay, the question is how long, if, if a variance is granted, how long is the variance active? And I'm assuming you're asking that, like, say, if no action was immediately taken by the applicant. And I'm going to turn to Mr. Falk to, is it a year or two?
It's actually, should the board approve any request tonight, the applicant has two years in which to obtain a building permit. If a building permit is not obtained within two years, the approval is null and void. Once a variance is granted and a building permit is issued, they're good indefinitely.
Okay, did that answer your question?
Run with the land.
Okay. Thanks for the question. Are there any other questions? I see a hand here, sir.
A testimony that has been submitted either by email or mail, how is that entered into the record?
All right, thanks for the question. Uh, it's testimony that's been entered, uh, will be read into the record. First of all, email, uh, it'll be read into the record tonight, either in affirmation of the application, if it was favorable, or in opposition to the application. If an email was late in coming and there's a chance that, for example, we missed it, I, I don't know if that's happened, but I could envision that, especially if, if you might be the author of that email, it's fair game for you to bring that testimony tonight. So if you've submitted something already, feel free to exercise your right to, at the public hearing, to speak and just, you know, say, I've submitted this email. Does everybody have it? This is what I spoke about. Because if you submitted something, we sure don't want to miss it. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, I think we'll get going. Uh, we all good to go? Let me just, uh, I'd, let's open the public hearing on case number two. Remember, case number one was with, postponed. So case number two, the owners are Lucian G. and Marielle Bergeron. It's considered land, not a street address at Lynn Street. And the following variances are requested. Number one, to allow a driveway within 50 feet of an intersection of two streets, which is Virginia Avenue and Connecticut Avenue. There's, 50 feet is required, zero feet is proposed. Number two is minimum lot frontage. 75 feet is required, zero feet is proposed. And number three, minimum lot width. 90 feet is required, zero feet is proposed. And that's to con, the proposal is to construct a single-family house on an undeveloped lot of record with no street frontage. So who is here to present this case? Hi, sir. If you'd like to come to the microphone, feel free to lift that microphone up or down so it's, uh, good for your height. And if you'd like to walk us through your application and the points of law, we-
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lucian Bergeron. I live at 11 Lynn Street. We've lived there since 1960. The lot I own behind me, which is part of the Roger Brothers Development when they first developed Country Club Acres, they had plotted the land and plotted the right-of-way, excuse me, to be part of their project. However, as it progressed, they decided that that one particular lot, they would not sell, uh, they wouldn't build, they would sell instead. And to just give you a little history, when I moved to Lynn Street, at Three Lynn Street, there was a man named Mr. Roy Barnaby. At Seven Lynn Street, there's Joe and his wife, Lebednik, and we were at 11 Lynn Street. And Roy Barnaby was kind of the historian for the neighborhood. He had his narrow lot facing Lynn Street and a wider landlocked piece of land that went all the way up to the right-of-way, which at the time was the farmer's access to the Country Club Acres area. And in so doing, he had the first landlocked piece of land there. And after a few years, we gardened together, and he notified me that Roger Brothers was going to sell that one particular lot, and I should go and look at it. And I did, and we ended up buying it. So to give you just a little history about Roy Barnaby, he's the one who explained that the Country Club Acres was a great big farmland at the time, and the farmer used to come from Taylor Road at the time, it wasn't Taylor Street, across the back of these two landlocked lots into his farming area. And as it went on, Roy also explained that the, uh, I'm sorry, getting a little sidetracked here. Anyhow, it Roy, so it ends up that Roy sold part of his landlocked lot to the people on Taylor Street, and I don't remember the number, uh, I think the users live there now. And the backside of their house lot is Roy Barnaby's original landlocked piece of land. Mine is parallel to it, reaching up to the right-of-way. It comes all the way across from Taylor Street to Virginia Drive. And the intent was, at the time, we gardened it, and it was an area for our children to play. And over the years, we had anticipated coming into the city and requesting permission to go up the city-owned right-of-way to access our land and cut some more trees and probably use it. In recent years, uh, we weren't able to physically get up there and do that. However, this year, I thought we could probably do that. So I came to the board with the intent of having them allowing us to use the city-owned right-of-way to come into our lot, trim out some trees, trim out some of the stumps, and see if we could put a single-layered, a single-floor, small domicile so that the wife and I, who I have improvised balance and stairs, could access in and out basically on one level. So that was the original intent. Since then, in talking with some of the neighbors, there's a big, big concern about the water table coming down from Taylor Street onto Lynn, Lynn Street. And the, getting back to Mr. Roy Barnaby, who was the historian, because the water situation on Taylor Street was so bad, the city had put in a storm drain crossing Taylor Street, but it ended there. And the first lot on Lynn Street got flooded, so the city continued the line, parallel to lots three and seven, east and west, and at the line between seven and 11, which is the neighborhood ours, they came north to Lynn Street, and then it's a little culvert out in front of my house. So the drainage from Taylor Street came all the way across two, well, three lots, actually, two hours, and then came down to Lynn Street. The water table in that area is so high that the people at Three Lynn Street, the Lebedniks, when they built their house, they couldn't put a foundation in. They had to build just on a small sidewall, and every spring behind their house down towards the street, Lynn Street, it would flood out. In fact, their septic tank was in their front yard as close to Lynn Street as possible because it couldn't work in the backyard. And consequently, in talking with the neighbors, since I decided to get in and open up the lot, their main concern is a lot of the water being affected by my cutting a couple of trees and a couple of stumps in that lot. And it's not, that isn't the problem. The problem is the height of the western side of Taylor Street, the water level just comes down that whole hill and inundates the area just to the south of the Lynn Street line. And years ago, Marcelle's wife had the city come in and investigate that, and they enlarged, I think, well, excuse me, at the time, there were no mains on Taylor Street and no 12-inch mains on Lynn Street. So there was no way to handle the water flow down the hill, except for going through this little culvert that the city put in. And once Roy Barnaby passed on, and he was the contact with the city, when that culvert was acting up, we didn't have any resources to get in there and fix that. And the last complaint I heard this past week was that there's a culvert cover at the corner of lots seven and lot three and my lot that's overflowed this past spring. So the water situation is there, always has been. However, I'd like to get back to my lot. What we really would like to do, and the right-of-way at the time, to the specifications that the city had at that time, and in the deed for Roger Brothers, they say the city right-of-way, and, and verbally, in talking with Roger Brothers, when we bought the lot, they guaranteed that that was the, our landlocked lot, which is a standard house lot, 135 by 102, and it's a slope, but it's very even, would be there for us to use whenever. And we have a large family, so for years we gardened it, and we enjoyed it, and we still do to this day. However, we would like to get in from Virginia Drive, get in, get some equipment in there to clean out some trees and some stumps, and see where we can feasibly put a small home, a single-floored home, that we'd be able to use.
All right. Were you all set, or did you have more testimony?
Right now, memory's working. It's short nowadays.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering if there are any questions for Mr. Bergeron? And I forgot, what is your home address? I, I, I-
11 Lynn Street.
11 Lynn Street.
Yes.
Okay.
It's Lynn Street is three, seven, and 11.
All right.
And when we moved there, it was three and seven. We were the third house built there.
All right. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Are there any questions for Mr. Bergeron? I actually have a couple of questions if nobody else does. And that is, where were you proposing the driveway if this were approved?
To come in from Virginia Drive, up the city-owned right-of-way, and have the house, the front of the house there.
Okay.
And again, this wasn't, you know, to be built tomorrow, so to speak. This was just trying to get a head start and find out how we could locate based upon what they find underneath the ground as far as ledge or rock or whatnot.
All right. My other question is, you had mentioned about this Rogers Brothers deed or something like that?
Yeah.
Or this promise or something? Do you have anything in writing on that? I don't-
I had submitted it with my application.
Okay.
It's two paragraphs, I think. It says, "Mrs. Rogers sure that the city-owned right-of-way?"
No.
I didn't see anything like that.
I didn't see that.
Well, it made it in, but usually we don't give warranty deeds.
I'm just gonna, we do have something here, and I'm going to take a quick peek and pass it on.
Okay.
While I ask, is there any other questions for Mr. Bergeron?
There are three big companies developing that. Brown Brothers of Nashua, Lee Trady of Nashua, and Roger Brothers of Hudson.
All right, so as I briefly looked through this warranty deed, I guess I was hoping my eyes would fall on, uh, is this, is this it here? It says, "Westerly by said northerly line of a proposed street."
I'd have to see that again.
Okay. Well, um, why don't, uh-
I think that could be Virginia because Virginia did not have a name at that time.
Well, I'm, I don't want to make guesses myself, but I will ask, uh, well, let me see, if there are not any other questions, I think we might be all set with testimony, and I could give this to you while we hear if there's any, we do have some opposition, and you could take a look at that. Because I'd like you to point out to me anyway what the, uh, the, uh, street, I'd like to clarify that, what the, you know, the writing is.
When you say westerly, the right-of-way goes east and west? So it would be west from the landlocked lot?
I'm just, uh, could I, let me just pass this around here. Can you pass that down to him? I, I guess we'll take a look at it on the way, and it'll make its way down to you.
And then can I have it?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Ms. Vitale?
How, how wide is that right-of-way total width?
I believe it's 25 feet.
So-
And now it's 30 feet required, but I think at the time, it was well within the ordinance.
Okay, and that, was that what we would have called like a paper road, and they never completed it?
Well, again, it was just in the deed and the, and the conversation when we bought it from Roger Brothers, they said, you know, because it's a landlocked lot, your right-of-way is here to get out whenever you want to.
Okay, so that little stretch that's right there by the corner of Connecticut on over to Taylor is what would be considered Virginia right in there?
Exactly, exactly. It's probably hard to say now, see now, because there's a bunch of barriers that've been put up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're all set for questions, Mr. Bergeron. You could have a seat, and when we finish looking at that warranty deed, I think one of us will bring it to you. And Ms. McKay hasn't seen that yet. I inadvertently bypassed her, so she's going to see it before we bring it down. So if you'd like to have a seat-
Okay.
-for now, I'd like to ask, is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed house on the corner of Virginia Drive and Connecticut? Anybody else in favor? Okay, so we'll go to opposition, and I'll first read a letter a fella just handed me this evening. So I haven't had a chance to read it, and I'll just read it into the record verbatim so we can all hear it. I hope it sticks to the points of law, but we'll see. Uh, it's written September 26th, and it's by Jeanne and Janine Tremblay at 4 Carolina Drive. And it says, "Dear ZBA," or Zoning Board of Adjustment, "I am writing to express my strong objection to the proposed variances for Lucian and Mary Bergeron to construct a single-family house that will be constructed in the rear of my home." Uh, again, this is 4 Carolina Drive, their owners at that home. "There are several factors that I wholeheartedly believe will impact the quiet enjoyment of my home and will significantly reduce the value of my home. First and foremost, I will lose my privacy. I specifically chose this particular home and lot when I moved here over 30 years ago for the privacy in the rear of my home. The addition of this home will end my privacy, for which my wife and family value dearly. This factor alone will reduce the value of my home, and even more importantly, our peace of mind. I have consulted several seasoned real estate professionals who have substantiated my concerns. I have several other concerns as well regarding the construction process that are well-documented issues. Living with the eyesore and noise in new construction is a serious disruptive nuisance and an intrusion of our peace of mind. Number two, additional traffic parking issues with construction vehicles, subcontractors, delivery vehicles. Number three, dust and debris." delivery vehicles. Number three, dust and debris that will potentially impact my home and yard. Four, lot line setback issues. Five, new construction is out of character for this well-established neighborhood. Based on these realities outlined above, I vehemently urge you to reject the proposed variances for the land at Lynn Street. My family and I thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our rebuttal to this development in our beloved backyard. Also, there is a stone wall in the back of my property that cannot, I think cannot be disturbed." And that is from Jean and Janine Tremblay, and there's a few photographs here that I have taken a look at, and I will pass, wow, I wish my garden looked as good as that one. So I will pass these photographs around, and, I mean, Mr. Falk, I think you, did you get copies of the emails?
Yes.
Do you have those handy? We did, I think, get a couple of emails in. I thought it might be prudent that I just read them. Is this it? Oh, great. Well, I've taken a look at these and, yeah. So the first is from Eleanor Hughes at 90 Taylor Street. That one, has anybody not seen that?
Haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it?
No.
Okay. This, maybe I'll just read this one into the record.
Just take a look at it after you're done.
Yeah, all right. So we have one from 9, again, Eleanor Hughes at 90 Taylor Street. We've read that except for Mr. Boucher. Are you, had you read that? Okay. Then the next one is, this is the owner of 3 Lynn Street, but at least on this print, there's not a name associated with it, but anyway, it's claims to be the owner of 3 Lynn Street, and there's rebuttals to question 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Does he have a name up here?
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry. Douglas Darlimple. So we have that on record. Has anybody not seen that one? I'll pass that on to JP also. We also have concerns, and an email from the abutters at 7 Lynn Street, that's Francie and Cindy D. Simone. Has anybody not seen that? There's some pictures attached to this one, which I had not seen on the email. So I will pass these down the line.
Yeah, but just wanted to hand this to the-
Yes, if you've already read those, you could pass those around. So we have that testimony and opposition that I've just spoken about. Is there other opposition that anybody would like to bring forth tonight? Any other opposition to the land at Lynn Street?
Should ask about other testimony in favor first, right?
I thought I did. Was there other testimony? Did I miss that? Was there other testimony in favor?
He did.
Yeah, okay. No problem. All right, so we have three or four correspondences in opposition, and just one more time, is there anybody else who had opposition who, you know, if somebody had sent something in and I missed it, I didn't want to miss it, and I'd like to hear it, but I'm not seeing anyone. So, Mr. Bergeron, how you doing? If you could come back to the microphone. Okay, so Mr. Falk said that you, he had provided you copies of the opposition, all except for the first one I read tonight, which was Jean and Janine, and I didn't know if you wanted to take a look at that. I mean, I did read it in, every word of it, into the record, and there's some photographs there. If you'd like to see that, that's fine, if you're okay, because I've read into it, and hopefully you could hear me loud and clear. You could take it away with what your thoughts are on this opposition.
On the warranty deed, I'm not familiar, you know, with the technicalities right now, and it's hard for me to remember, so to speak.
Okay.
But this is the warranty deed we got from Roger Brothers.
Okay.
Again, I don't know if this was part of another excerpt, or, but-
Yeah, all right.
What I, two, I say several items. The letter from 7 Lynn Street concerning the water is what I mentioned earlier. It has been there from day one, okay, and the sad part is, the present people have put a lot of money into bringing up their lawn and whatnot, and it still happens. And it's not because of the land right behind it, it's because of the water coming down the slope from the westerly side of Taylor Street, and I want to say underground, but that's the case. The objection from the people from 4 Carolina, very, very disturbing in that that particular house lot has over 100 feet of frontage on one street, that same house lot has about 100 feet of frontage on another street. And what they've done, in the right-of-way, they have put up four barriers. They have a fence that's about seven foot tall, about 35 feet long, never got a permit to put up, and it actually extends into Virginia Drive. If you go down and look at it, runs from a telephone pole all the way across the sidewalk, or the sidewalk space, into Virginia Drive. The wall they talk about is a cobblestone wall. The cobblestones came from Commercial Street when they took that up years ago, and they, you know, I have an idea how they got them, because the city had stockpiled them, and schooled down the south end, and they picked them up there and bought them. And every year, they would move the wall into the city-owned right-of-way. I always thought it was illegal to move anything into a city-owned right-of-way. So right now, there's four barriers in the city-owned right-of-way. There's a massive fence, a cobblestone wall, shrubbery, and they filled in the land, the height of their lot, so that when it gets to my land, it drops about three feet. The right-of-way used to be the same level as the hot top, the street, coming all the way across to Taylor Street. And if you look at it, you'll see from the Taylor Street side, the right-of-way is level, and when it gets to the lot line, the 4 Carolina Drive lot line, it jumps up about three feet.
If I could just jump in a minute.
Sorry?
Just to clar, just, you know, we need to focus on the points of law. You know, by your testimony here, it sounds like, you know, maybe some fence or something there at 4 Lynn Street may not be permitted or whatever, but that's really beyond the scope of what we're here for. We're looking at the points of law, you know, for, for your proposal. So I just wanted to remind you of it. I mean, even if a fence or a rock wall was not where it's supposed to be at in a budding property, that really is not supposed to have any bearing on our decision with your application. So I just wanted to remind you about trying to focus on those points of law.
I'm sorry, just, it just caught my attention-
Yeah.
-when they said, "All these other items," okay, they mentioned in their complaint, and I said, you know, it kind of got my attention.
Yeah.
Let me just get, here, one more. So again, I hear the opposition, okay, but if you just think about, it's a city-owned right-of-way, that my full-size house lot, a butts, and that's the only access to a street we have. And the people that are in opposition have 100 feet on the same street, and for them to vote against 24 feet, it's hard to understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions for Mr. Bergeron? Mr. Lionel?
You would be able, wouldn't you be able to create, construct a driveway through your 11 Lynn Street property to this, to this lot?
No.
Why not?
Because the property, for instance, you wouldn't be able to access water lines, sewer lines, gas lines, and it, it's a full-size house lot. It's not a piece of particle. It's bought separately with the intent, like I said, Roger Brothers were gonna build a house on it, and they decided at the time that they would stop. What they had there right-of-way, had they put up a house, it would have been using that right-of-way.
I didn't see anything in your, in your warranty deed regarding the right-of-way.
If you, just the hell out of-
I did not see anything in the warranty deed about your being able to build through the right-of-way. In fact, it doesn't even mention the right-of-way. It delineates where your lot is, but it doesn't say anything about, I didn't, at least I didn't see any words about access through that right-of-way.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Lionel. I think we're all set with Mr. Lionel's question. We're all, he's all set with his question. So are there any other questions from Mr. Bergeron? I think we're all set with questions, so you could have a seat. And now, by our bylaws, one person, or any one person, who has written in one of those letters I just referred to, has the right to speak to Mr. Bergeron's latest testimony. Is there anybody who has written a letter who is interested in speaking, or is everybody okay with resting their case with the letter they've written? Do I see a hands of anybody who wants to speak? I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna say that there is one lady. Ma'am, if you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and if you've given us the letter already, that's fine. If not, it-
I just wanted to kind of elaborate a little bit more.
Okay, if you could come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Cindy D. Simone, and I live at 7 Lynn Street, which is the property right next door to Lou's.
Okay.
Along with my husband, we're the property owners. And Lou talked about the water problem, and I guess some of it is as a result of, as he explained, from Taylor Street. But this past year, it was really, really bad, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. So our backyard was virtually a swamp, along with the smell, this past spring into early summer until the end of June.
Could I ask you to pull that microphone down? Just, ma'am, can you just pull that down?
I'm sorry.
Just pull it down, then you don't have to, there you go. You could just, why don't you just hold it?
I don't want to take it out.
Yes, take it out.
Take it out? Okay.
There you go.
All right. So as I was saying, this is the worst our yard has ever been this year. We're unable to use our yard and basement as a result, and have spent a lot of time, effort, and money all summer to get our lawn back to a good state again. There's been no maintenance performed for many years on this drain system, and the catch basin associated with these pipes leaks onto our property. So this catch basin sits on this L Street lot. So we were told by the city that this is the landowner's responsibility to maintain the system, since these pipes do not appear on the GIS map, and there are no easements listed. Our concern too is that if there were to be a house and driveway on Lot L, the water runoff from this lot would further exasperate the situation, and thus be another negative impact on our property value. This could also cause an overload to the existing drainage system, and referencing zoning amendment 190-134, section F.C. Repairing the storm drain catch basin issue should definitely be a stipulation, as this will only continue to get worse. This issue needs to get rectified regardless of the outcome of this hearing. We would also like to see some mitigation of a potential water runoff situation from development on the slot that also be included as another stipulation. I just wanted to address that.
All right, thanks. Are there any questions for Ms. D. Simone? Actually, I have a question for you. The storm drain, I think you had sent some pictures of that. Where is that, or that catch basin, as you refer, where is that located?
It's right on the corner of this L Street lot on-
3 Lynn and our property, 7 Lynn.
Picture of it should be on the other side.
Okay, I see, I, yes, I see. This one shows it, and I didn't catch that before. And you were saying that the city said that-
Because it doesn't appear on this GIS map, and I guess there's no easement, something to that effect, they told us it's really not their problem. We should talk to the landowner of that lot to get it rectified. It's never been maintained, at least, you know, it doesn't appear to have ever been maintained since we've lived there, and over the years, it's just continued to leak, and we know it's coming from there because we have a rock wall sort of right in front of that area, and that's where we could see water running right off-
Okay.
-in that section, so.
Right. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Ms. D. Simone.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Ms. Vitale's hand is in the air.
I wondered if I could just see the picture of that catch basin, and I'll trade with the ones I have over here. Yeah, there's more over there. There's more pictures with all that. I printed out everything.
So Ms. Vitale is looking at that catch basin. Thoughts on the matter, Mr. Lionel?
I cannot support this request for multiple reasons. In addition to the variances requested, the request would also violate 19121, paragraph B, item 3, where it says, "Where any non-conforming contiguous lots, lot or lots, were held at common ownership on or after October 14, 1976, they shall not be sold, consolidated, or transferred to eliminate the common ownership unless they are sold, consolidated, or transferred, so as to create a conforming lot or lots where possible." There's also a, a rule that says that you can only have one main house on, on, on a lot. So if the intention was to build a house on this lot and sell 11 Lynn Street, then that would, it would violate, violate this rule. The placement of the driveway would run right in front of 8, what is it? No, 8 is, is the one I'm referring to, Connecticut Avenue.
8 Virginia.
8, 8 Virginia, yes. Right in front of their yard, definitely decrease the value of that house, having a dry, I, there's a, that fence in the right-of-way. Now, I know paper roads, people will sometimes, they'll, they'll do things and actually take adverse possession. There was actually somebody in my neighborhood who did that. There was a paper road, and they essentially built out half of it, applied for adverse possession, and now it belongs to them. There's, there's so many things wrong with this proposal that would just be lower the property values all around it. The water issue is completely irrelevant to this application. Yes, it's a terrible problem, but it has nothing to do with what we're talking about here. That has to be addressed some other way. I, there's, I cannot support this. There's, I cannot support this.
Thanks for your thoughts. I'm gonna turn back to Ms. Vitale, who had a chance to look at that. Thoughts on the matter?
I think I'd be inclined to be in support of it. Again, as was mentioned, the water issue going on in the area doesn't, I don't believe is really relevant. We know when somebody builds, they can't make the runoff any wor, you know, different than it is currently. So that should be addressed. It might even actually be better than it is after your building. I know that it was mentioned, you know, to have a building taking place, you know, there's, it's a pain in the neck to have a building go in next to you, but it's not something that when you have an open lot, you should almost always keep it back in your mind that it might happen. What would hold me back in the answers, I would want to know a little bit more about the width and the actual access and how we deal with that easement area off of that curve. We don't have any testimony from the neighbors next door saying how it would decrease the value of their property. There was no testimony one way or the other regarding that, to, you know, have that type of testimony. It is a lot. I looked at the deed. I did not look at it in the way that a lawyer would write it, to know for sure that he didn't have an easement to do, you know, to get access to his property. So I'd like to see that pointed out also.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I think I'm, I think basically I can't support it right now, unless convinced otherwise, but I think it's basically the key point that Mr. Lionel spoke to, that with the common lot ownership and the contiguous nature of these two lots, I don't see how we are actually making things less non-conforming by going and adding this, basically separation of lots and the addition of the access to Virginia Ave. So I guess that's where I'm kind of hung up on right now.
Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to know a little bit more, maybe if Mr. Falk can help us out on the paper street and how the city views that. Please.
Paper streets are, they're, they can be a little confusing. Usually, if a developer has a street laid out in a subdivision plan, they have to build it. And after, if it's not built after 20 years, it can revert back to private ownership on either side of the paper street by the property owners. The property owners on either side of the street, they each get half of it, and the right of way doesn't exist anymore. I don't know if this ever went, and it has to be done by the Board of Alderman. They're the proper board that distinguishes, erases, extinguishes a right of way. Once that's done, then the property owners on either side get half. And then it's gonna also show on their deed, and it's also gonna show on the GIS map. It's not gonna show any space where a right of way would have been. It's just gonna show lots abutting one another. This doesn't show it this way on this map, so I don't know if this right of way was ever considered by the Board of Alderman and actually extinguished. Also, the 24 or 25-foot wide right of way, that's, I don't think that's ever been our standard. If it was, it was back in, before cars and paved roads. We've had a 50-foot wide right of way minimum for residential streets for quite some time, I would say probably 40 to 50 years. Before that, it used to be 40 feet. So this, I don't think this would have been sufficient for any right of way. If so, it's very strange, 'cause it's only gonna be servicing two lots. And usually, they don't build roads just to build, just to have access for one or two lots, 'cause it could just cost too much money for water, sewer, utilities, services like that, so... I don't, I don't really know if this was ever extinguished. I don't even know really what it is. I mean, it's, it's too narrow to be anything that cars would go on. Even when the subdivision was developed, the right of way widths back then were still 50 feet, and this is barely half of that. So it may have been a right of way for something other than vehicular purposes. I really don't know. This is something that really, our department doesn't really do a lot of research on, 'cause we're not really, like, road agents and really have the experience and education and knowledge to really understand the old, old, old history of these roads, so...
So, for lack of a better term, best-case scenario is, there's a 25-foot right of way there. The worst case, or the other scenario, is that it would have been dissolved, and the landowner would, on paper here, have approximately 12 feet of frontage on Connecticut or Virginia, however that would come out.
Right. Well, that little strip there between the applicant's lot and, like, say, Two and Four, Carolina...
Right.
That little strip there wouldn't exist, and these lots would touch one another. It would be like, like one square hitting another square.
So what, yeah, so what I'm saying is, if that was the case, right, it would split the difference in half, let's say, right? So then, there would be this 12-foot wide axis on paper, right, from the intersection of Virginia and Connecticut to this lot.
Well, maybe. I mean, there's also the lot at Eight Virginia, which has, which runs behind a piece of this right of way.
Right, I understand that. You know...
Can I jump in?
Yeah, I don't think that's the case. I always think about the same thing, but the way, Eight wouldn't come out, 'cause Eight's already up against the right of way.
Yeah.
So the right of way would, it's right there, this would get divided, and so this is the Connecticut right of way.
Yeah, okay.
So it would have this 12 and a half feet if that were to happen, so...
Right. This is a, you know, this little strip here, I can't really think of another location in the city that has something that is so narrow that wouldn't even meet yesteryear's standards. I don't know what it, I don't really know what it was used, it may not have even been a vehicular right of way. It may have been something that the developer put in, and maybe he wanted to use it for utilities or drainage, I really don't know.
There's actually one off of East Tonsable Road, going towards Main Street, off of the side street, that I know is there. And the only reason I know is because the landowner decided to beautify it and put grass in and brought some fill in. And the comment was, is that they know it's city property, and it's approximately 20-something feet wide. And it was to be a cut through to another street, that never, never happened. So, you know, I know there's one other one. It's not to make an argument, but I guess I have knowledge of one that's kind of that narrow. But it might not have been for a street, it might have been for something else, right?
Right. I don't know exactly why this was put here. I mean, if the city wanted it to be a right of way for vehicular access and actually have it paved, they would have done so.
Right.
And even back then, I don't know why they would have, just to separate those two lots just by themselves. They'd be surrounded on, you know, three sides by a street.
So help me understand, I know exactly, you know, what Mr. Lionel stated about the contiguous lots, so just help me refresh my memory. Is that in the case where it's landlocked, or is it because of the use?
It doesn't necessarily have to be landlocked. We have, actually, the board has seen several occurrences of someone owning two lots together, and they wanna sell off one of them and build a house there. We've, the board has seen several variances for lot width, lot frontage, lot area, you know, over the years. There are several agendas. This was a little bit different, because both of the lots are, they would technically meet the area, frontage and width, they're both good-sized lots, they're both, they're bought in different times as well. And usually, that, the code section actually says for undeveloped lots, like, if you have two small little lots that are non-conforming, they don't meet any of the dimensional criteria, you can't sell one of them off. Those have to be held together. That used to be what our code was for years. There was a change to the state law that says that assessing departments, zoning departments, generally city, I mean, city departments can't do that anymore. I know that was mentioned a while ago, but I don't remember all the details.
Right, so, yeah, and remember, I was talking about, so this is where I'm a little hung up on that particular item, but again, not to belabor that, but I'm, I guess I'm not in support of that reasoning for this.
See, I, our staff did not offer that as a reason for them to come before this board for a variance. We thought it was proper to advertise it for lack of street frontage and not having frontage, width, and having a driveway that would be at the intersection of these two rightaways, instead of non-conforming. It already is non-conforming by the fact that it doesn't have any frontage and width anyway, so that's just the way we decided to advertise it.
That's all I have for now.
Okay. Ms. McKay?
This is a tough one. For me, purchasing a property with full expectation to, at some point, utilize that property is basically what we all do. And he was under the understanding that he would have a right of way. Whether that exists or not seems to be a question for the Alderman, who need to understand, or need to let us know, is there a right of way? Does it still exist? Was it extinguished? And if it was extinguished, does that then give the two abutting property owners 12 and a half feet of this 25 feet? Also, I would like to know what the ADA has to say about this, because they're wanting to build a home because of their disabilities. And the Americans with Disabilities Act, I'm sure, would have something to say on this. And the lot is, by virtue of its size, a conforming house lot. I know on my street, where I live, there was an empty lot next door to my house for years and ages, and it got sold. And they wanted to build a house, but they couldn't put the driveway on the opposite side to our driveway, because there were power lines running right there. So they had to come to the zoning board, and they put the driveway next to our driveway, which technically, you're not supposed to do, but they did. And we all thought it was gonna be a huge issue. Turns out, they're the best neighbors we've ever had. They've been there for, I can't tell you how many years. And, you know, the driveways next to the driveways, you know, with this little tiny piece of land, the only time it's a problem is when everybody wants to park on my street so they can get to Holman Stadium for the fireworks. So I just, I have a hard time, and I would have a hard time, responding to this without answers to my questions, without answers to JP's questions, without answers to Rob's. I concur with Ms. Vitale in how she thinks. I just need more information, 'cause I'm hard-pressed to say no. I'm very hard-pressed to say no.
All right.
And I think it's because it's denying a property owner rights to utilize their property, and that's my sticking point.
Thank you. My thoughts are, you know, we've heard a lot of testimony, I think it's quite emotional, but a lot of it, I think, doesn't stick to the points of law. And first of all, from the, for example, from the applicant's point of view, I mean, my heart goes out. They've been there a long time, have had this property, kind of eyeing it for a generation to move into it, but that's not what, you know, variances are the points of law are about. A lot of the opposing testimony, I agree, like the water and that catch basin, it's, that's on a private piece of property. There's no city maintenance of that. Quite frankly, you know, the owner could do whatever he wants with that. And so that, I don't find as a reason to deny. You know, but the issue, I came here tonight, was, you know, in the application, it spoke about this proposed street, or a promise, or something, but when I look at the warranty deed, I'm not a lawyer, but the warranty deed just says something like a proposed street. And that's, that's, to me, it's like a hope. It's not a guaranteed thing. It's a proposed street, it's never gone in. And so I'm looking at the requests about the zero feet of frontage and the zero feet from an intersection. I'm not finding that that's worthy of a variance myself. That's where I'm at. And I guess I'm gonna turn to your comment and say, what additional information, maybe yourself and JP, because, you know, you're looking for information, and that's a good thing. What exactly, you know, are you looking for, you know, to make your decision? Because if we were gonna ask for more information, which might be a table or something like that, I'd just kind of fast-forward and say, what are you looking for? And also, Mr. Boucher, so if we were to decide to do that, we would know what, you know, you were looking for.
I guess I want to know, is this an easement? Is it extinguished? What is it? It's a little, you know, it looks like a little sidewalk on this map. I don't know what it is, what it constitutes, and who has the rights to that, and how they may or may not use them.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, as far as the ADA issue, there's issues, there's disabilities, and that's a hardship that goes above and beyond some issues. And so I want to know about that. I just don't know if we take that into consideration, or we ignore that.
Well, let me just take a stab at that on, Mr. Shaw, your hand was...
Maybe you're gonna say the same thing, but I mean, and I'm not real good on the particulars, but there's definitely the state law that does allow for the variances to, as a hardship due to physical disabilities, but my understanding with that is, it runs with the owner, not with the land. And so in this case, if we were to follow that, it would essentially only be while these owners were living there, and then it would revert...
Lapse.
Lapse. So it's, doesn't seem like a viable solution in this kind of implementation. It's one thing when you're talking about, you know, handicap ramp or something like that on the front of a house, those kind of things are, you know, they're relatively kind of temporary in one sense, but this would be, you know, clearly a major investment. So I know there is kind of that path, but I doubt that would be something that...
Yeah, it's an accessibility issue, for sure.
So let me just turn to Mr. Falk and say, what would you think if, could you approach corporate counsel to get a clarification on paper streets? Just a thought. Let's just say if corporate counsel were to provide guidance of some sort on this paper street, perhaps, you know, and if we were to, say, table the public meeting, or table the public meeting, and so we're not looking for another public hearing, but we are seeking some expert counsel, you might say, and then in two weeks, we reconvene with that information, just a thought, I mean...
Can we recess the public meeting in anticipation of clarification, and then open it again?
Yeah, my thought would be we table, we table this, and, but when we have that clarification, which I think would be in two weeks, we would remove from the table the public meeting, but not have the public hearing again, be, what's that?
Mr. Falk is...
Well, I think it's maybe a little bit of corporation counsel, but also the Department of Public Works as well.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think both of them would probably weigh in on this. I know Mr. Bergeron has talked to DPW. I don't have... I don't have anything in writing, either from him or from DPW, that really describes the history and use and everything about this little section of a right of way. So, I don't know all the details, but that's certainly an option if you wanna hear from them and see what it, what it could be used for. I mean, ultimately, Mr. Bergeron would have to run water and sewer and gas and all those utilities from either Virginia or Connecticut into the slot. They wouldn't, I don't think they'd come from Taylor, that's probably too far. So, for them, it's just a matter of running stubbing utilities and going in and building the driveway that comes out to that intersection.
Mr. Boucher, did you have, you know, even following the conversation, did you have unanswered questions? I wasn't quite sure.
Well, just, just one thing. I would be fine with tabling, because if the right of way does exist in its current form, that would lead me to, you know, one, one, one position. The other thing is, is, do we have, get any testimony from number eight at all? Virginia?
I...
Not from all those letters and emails.
So, again, not to diminish any other testimony or butters, but number eight, to me, seems to be the one that would be the most aggrieved by this, this proposal, right? So, I just thought for sure that that would be the one that I would stand...
I mean, they were, they were notified, just like all the other butters, and we haven't heard from them, so...
Right.
You can't force or...
Of course, right.
Ask people for comments, it's not up to us to do that.
So, my position would be, if, if the board did decide, it would be a general consensus to table to get the specific information, whether or not the right of way exists in this format. You know, it sounds like Mr. Cott, or, uh, Mr. Falk, sorry, is saying that that might or might not, he might or might not get the information, but I guess it's worth it just to see if it, somebody can actually answer that. And, and if it comes back as no one really knows, then, then I guess it would be something that's not done, unless somebody else can provide information that they have something that shows that they're lots of different. But I would definitely value that information, specifically that information.
Okay. So we kinda have two folks in favor of a table. I'm looking at the other three, or, Mr. Shaw, did you...
I wanted to bring up a couple, go back to a couple other things.
Sure, great.
Bring up one thing. So, so, Mr. Falk kinda noted, and I'm, I'm actually not so convinced now about this 190-121, because it does talk about two or more undeveloped lots. So I think that with this being developed, one developed and one undeveloped, I think it kinda changes the nature of it in a lot of, lot of regards for me. The other thing is, if I just look at the GIS map and kinda take truly, kinda like a bird's eye view, when I look at this, this lot, it looks like it's meant to be, like, have a diagonal access onto that corner of Connecticut and Virginia, much like number 10, although obviously number 10 was kinda wrapped around that corner on the other, other end of Virginia. It seems, in many regards, the lot is kind of there, exists on its own and meant to essentially have access, not through any other property, not through seven, or 11, or eight, or four, any of these other ones, or 90, all these surrounding properties. So, yes, there's a common ownership that, that Mr. Bergeron has from number 11. But, so I'm, I guess I'm not so convinced one way or the other. And I do think that it's even more important to have some understanding of what's going on with, with that right of way, that so-called paper street. And when we started, Mr. Boucher kinda noted and kinda got into the conversation, if I were really to merge, and we were looking at what happens to, to number four Carolina and, or Connecticut, whichever number that goes to, and this property, then you're into even a partial frontage. So, it kinda even speaks more to, is there something that should be allowed, I think? So, I think it would definitely help to get that information, and I think it would help clarify things for me.
Okay. Mr. Lionel, do you wanna jump in on anything, or Ms. Vitale, or...
I, I have nothing else to say at this time.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Vitale, is your...
Yeah, going back to say, there, there is no correlation between number 11 that he currently lives in and this lot. As per discussion, testimony, they were bought at separate times or two, they're two separate lots. I would agree with Mr. Shaw. On the surface, it looks like there, that the intent could have been that there was access there. And I think finding out the answer to that easement question that we're gonna submit will probably shed some light on that. And, and if it was, if that was something that went through, it would have been a conforming lot. What makes it nonconforming is the fact that, that, that easement area doesn't allow it to be.
I, I would comment that that lot simply could have been left as open space. It's not, there's nothing that requires every single lot to have a house on it. In fact, in developments all over the place, there's, there's usually lots reserved for open space.
With your hand in the air?
Yes, I, I would agree with that. They are, they're usually noted, that they are meant to be open space. And there are many times in developments that they're, that they're cluster built, you know, where the intent was to have the homes closer together, but then leave open space available for the whole community to use or have access to.
Mr. Shaw, you had a...
Yeah, and similar to that, it's either would be basically deeded over to the city as something that was open space, it wasn't accessible. Or if it is something that can be held in private ownership, then we get into, I know there's the RSAs, 'cause we dealt with this on one other property, that you, there's this whole, and I think, maybe it is the abandonment term, I'm not sure if I remember the right terms, but you basically run into this issue. Somebody has a right to have access to their property if it's landlocked. And so, that's, that's another thing that ends up, especially if our code is keeping them from being able to do that. So, I know that can get a little tricky, and I think we went through, I can't remember exactly where that was, but somewhere off of Amherst Street, I think there was a property. So, I think that's a, I understand your point, but if it was, if it was deeded that way, if there was some restriction, that would be one thing. But there's nothing apparent that that also was restricted, this use of this lot.
Ms. McKay?
And in joining with Mr. Shaw's comments, would there not have to be an understanding of intent on the seller's part and the purchaser's part? As to whether they were gonna leave it an empty lot or build on it? We have no knowledge of intent on either party's side. I'm assuming that Mr. Bergeron at some point purchased the property with full intent to build on it. And we don't know.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure intent really holds much there. I think this is the kinda thing, there's, you know, lots of people have intentions about a lot of different things. And then, the reality of whatever the situation is prevents their, their ability to do that. So, I, I think it's, really comes down to more a matter of, you know, what, what is, what is allowed? What's available to them? But ultimately, even, even with this other information, this board still is gonna have to provide some relief in the form of variance to, at least as the proposal here, to have access.
So let me turn to Mr. Falk and say, if, if you were to seek that information for us, is two weeks too aggressive? Should we say four weeks?
I think two weeks is aggressive. That's asking two other departments to provide something in writing, probably within two weeks, 'cause our meeting is in two weeks from today. So, I think it's better off to ask for a second meeting in October.
Sure.
It's October 24th.
So let me just, can I hazard a motion and we'll see where it goes? I'm gonna make a motion on behalf of the owner, Lucian and Mary Bergeron, to table this request. And I, I ask, make a motion to table because the board seeks clarification on the status of the paper street that's adjacent to this land on Lynn Street. And also for, to see if there's a comment from Public Works Department on the, perhaps I'd say, challenge of providing, of accessing this lot. So we're seeking for a comment from those two departments to help us answer questions. And also, this table would be for two meetings out, or the second meeting in October. And if, 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 whether information comes in or may not come in, the intent would be that we would be, meet again in public meeting only, not in public hearing. And the only testimony we'd be receiving is a, you know, kinda expert testimony, I would call it, from the Department of Public Works and/or legal counsel. So with that, I make a motion to table, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor of the motion to table. So, so as, folks have been following, yeah, that was five, Ms. Vitale, it was just the five of us voting. So what we've done is, we've tabled this case, which is not an approval, it's not a denial. Mr. Falk is gonna seek to get us a little help in answering our questions on that paper street. We'll be convening in two meetings, the date of that...
October 24th.
Is October 24th. And it's only gonna be a public meeting, which is us speaking. We're not gonna be taking any more testimony other than the letters from the city. But everybody's welcome to attend, but there won't be any additional testimony taken in here at the mic because we believe we have that all. Any questions from anyone in the audience? All right, I'll close the public meeting on case number two. Thanks, folks, and we're gonna...
Are we good to keep going?
All right, we're gonna keep moving right along, and I'm gonna open the public hearing on case number three. The owner is Crowley Acquisitions Group, LLC. The address is 14 Abbott Street. The request is a variance for minimum lot area. 12,445 square feet is required. 6,540 square feet is existing. And this is to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. Hi, good evening, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening, my name is Rob Crowley, and my address is 3 Hibiscus Way in Nashua.
Hi, would you like to walk us through your request tonight on 14 Abbott Street?
So 14 Abbott Street is currently a single-family home. The ordinance permits it to be a two-family. So, I'm here for the variance on the landlot size. My intent is to convert it to a two-family with no changes to the outside. The exterior is not going to change, the driveway is not going to change, the landscaping won't change, other than just being improved. The plan is to fix up the house, the house is in really poor shape. The ins, the outside is much better than the inside, the inside is horrific. So I'm planning on putting in some substantial renovations into it. I would argue that it is in the spirit that it will support the neighborhood. Just about every house that's next to it is a multifamily, as is in the poor condition as a single-family. I see much more value in a renovated two-family. I have been before the board before on identical requests that have been approved and have supported this. And we continued on, you know, with the city, got the proper permits, renovated it, and the value of that, of those houses were substantially higher as well. So I would, I would support that, the value of the neighboring houses will be enhanced by this renovation as well. Like I said, nothing's going to change, it's, it is in the historic district. So there's nothing on the outside that I would be doing, other than just all inside work. It's pretty much set up as a two-family now, to be honest. There's really not a lot of work that has to get done in terms of changing the, the structure of the house. It's, this is all just renovations, doors, kitchens, windows, roofs, that kinda stuff. So no real major changes to it. There's at least four parking spaces right now. The bedroom count of the house as a single-family is not going to change. As a multifamily, I'm not adding bedrooms, so it's gonna stay the exact same bedroom count. Other than that, just, just gonna be renovating it and enhancing it.
All right, thanks, Mr. Crowley. Any questions? Mr. Shaw?
One clarification, though. So was it actually, do you know if it was being used even if not as a legal two-family? I guess, 'cause you said, I'm trying to misunderstand if, if it was kind of existing in, in principle and function as a two-family, maybe not legally before you acquired it. Is there any evidence of that, or is it more evidence that it was just a single family?
It looks like for many years, it, it's been a single family. I, one could argue, if you looked at it, that maybe years ago, people were, separated it out just by the way the doors are and by, just by the egress. They both have their own egress in and out, so there's two on each floor. You know, the, a lot of the plumbing is kind of in the right locations. So, I have no knowledge, I don't think it was being used any, in, in the near future or for a very long time, but I think maybe at one point, it looks like, you know, it is an older house, so it, it looks like it did have some separation.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, what is the bedroom count?
Five.
Five. So it's gonna end up being three and two?
Correct.
And what are the entrance exits that you're, you, if this were approved, would, would it be front, back? How does, what's your thought on that?
So the first floor would have a back door, and then it has a side door.
Mm-hmm.
Then the upstairs would have a front door and also has a back door with stairs going down to the rear.
Oh, so, okay, so it would be an upstairs, downstairs?
It'd be an upstairs, downstairs.
Oh, when I was looking at it, I thought it would, might be more of a side-by-side, but upstairs, downstairs?
No, it'd be upstairs and downstairs, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? I think we're all set. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposal at 14 Abbott Street? Anyone with questions, concerns, opposition about, we have a fella here. If you'd like to come up to the microphone and give us your name and address. While he's making his way, is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? We have another fella, anybody besides this guy with the green shirt? Okay, we have two folks who are gonna be speaking. Hi, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Martin Storer, S-T-O-R-E-R. I live at 9A Abbott Street, which is kitty corner from number 14.
Hi, welcome, what's on your mind tonight?
Okay, I'm speaking opposition. So, I just wanna clarify, before I, I start getting to the points of law, I wanna clarify about the usage of the house in the past. My family and I have lived at 9A Abbott Street since early 1995. It was occupied by, as I understand, one of the owners, Carol Marshall, who I think was city clerk previously, you know, many years ago. And she occupied that, she was occupying it when we moved in. And she was the only one living there at the time. And from, I wanna say, 96 or 97, it was, she moved out, it was, it was simply vacant. And what I heard was that there was a dispute among, you know, different people, maybe in the same family, about how, how the property should be used or disposed of. But I know for a fact that there was no one living there since, you know, 1997 at the latest. So, so, and to my knowledge, in 22 years back, there, there was no two-family situation. So that's just a fact.
Okay.
So, as far as, you know, I appreciate the, you know, the, Mr. Crowley wanting to come in and renovate and make it, make it a useful property, okay? The problem I see is that, you know, to make it a two-family is, is gonna be, it's gonna be bad. I think it's gonna be, you know, one point of law is the, the public interest. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be necessarily in the public interest. I have some very deep concerns about that, 'cause it's gonna be more crowded, right? If you have two families in there, Mr. Crowley stated that there, right now, there, there's four, room for four cars. That's not accurate, you know? It's a, it's, there's not room for four cars, there's a, there's a dilapidated garage and there's like space in front of it. So if you, maybe, maybe there'd be room for four if you stacked the cars. But as it is now, you know, that, that's a, you know, I don't know if that's part of code or whether that's allowed. You know, you'd have to have one behind the other in two, in two lanes. You, you might get three abreast if you got small cars. But, you know, so that's, that's one thing. And, you know, the second thing is the, the crowding on the street, you know, would, would increase. It's a, it's a small lot. It's, you know, and the, the code, you know, the, the normal requirement is about 12,000 some square feet, so it's almost twice as much required for a two-family, family house. And I assume that the rule was put in place to discourage overcrowding, right? Because, you know, if you, if you have, I don't, first of all, I don't see how it... Because, you know, if you, if you have, I don't, first of all, I don't see how it would work with a driveway situation to have two families in there, I think it would be a big stretch. And Abbott Street, you know, is, is one street from which kids are dropped off at Mount Pleasant School, it's a public elementary school, they're, sort of the back is on Abbott Street, and the front is on Manchester Street. And there are people, you know, there are kids, people dropping off, their kids are all the time, and it's gonna be, you know, more construction is gonna mean more, you know, more difficulty for the parents to do that. So, and, and lastly, I'm just concerned about the property values, I mean, to renovate the house and to, you know, either, either rent the house, or occupy the house, or flip the house, or whatever wants to be done, you know, that, you know, that doesn't mean that it has to be a two-family house, it could be a one-family house, and still achieve the same, you know, same effect on property values. So, you know, so, you know, I, I think my property values are gonna go down with a more crowded street, and then it would be a lot, a lot of, a lot of squeezing into that house would have to be done to, to make it work.
All right, thanks, so let's see if there's any questions for you, any questions for Mr. Storer? Mr. Shaw has a question for you.
Just, Mr. Crowley had kind of pointed out in his application that this, there's a lot of multifamily in this area, and that this would be consistent with that. I guess I'm, want to get your opinion or view of what you think the occurrence or rate of multifamily is in, and also at this level of density.
Okay, on, on, on Abbott Street itself, on, on the whole of Abbott Street, I'm, I'm thinking it's about half and half, because I researched that when we moved in, okay, so, half and half was like the, either the owner, the owner lived at the, at the house, or the owner lived nearby, so it might actually be more multifamily than not on the whole street. So, but there's sort of like two sections of Abbott Street, one goes from Amherst Street to sort of the, sort of just past Mount Pleasant School, and then Abbott Street sort of take, sort of veers off to the, to the northeast a little bit, and that's what I call the, sort of the second section of Abbott Street, right? So, now, the first section is where fourteen is and where, where we are, nine A. So it's mostly, I, let's see, so, next door to us is unoccupied, so we're a single-family. Next door on the south is multifamily, next door to that is the Historical Society. There are two houses that are being, that are for sale now, okay, on, on the corner of Abbott and Amherst, which, one of them will be a single-family, you know, once it's sold, a hundred percent, there's no, there's no use, I've been in it, and it's gonna be a single-family. Another one, I'm not sure, it could be, it's very big, and it's, so it may be, it may be multifamily, but I don't, I, I, I kind of don't think so, but I, but I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Then there are, on the same side, there are two, let's see, one, two, three, there are three multifamilies in a row, then there's fourteen, and there's another multifamily, and then beyond that, it's a single-family, I think a multifamily, and I think a, I think a single-family. So it's pretty, it's, it's, it's a mixed bag, it's, it's, and then on our side, beyond, beyond, next door is vacant, like I say, but that, that might be, you know, I'm not sure if, that will probably be multifamily, it's, it's for sale probably, or the owner hasn't disposed of it. And then beyond that is, is a multifamily, so it's a, it's a bit more multifamily on the first section of Abbott Street than, than owner occupied, or a single-family.
All right, thank you. I had the same question as Mr. Shaw, so you've answered that. Any other questions for Mr. Storer? All right, thanks, you could have a seat, and sir, if you'd like to come up and let us, give us your name and address, and if the spelling isn't obvious, I might ask you to spell it so we get it right.
It's not obvious. I'm Robert Vorbach, I currently live at fifty-eight Manchester Street, and that's V as in Victor, O-R, B as in boy, A-C-H.
I probably wouldn't have gotten that right, so thank you.
So, I have lived in the North End for twenty-six years, I am a Nashua-based architect. Over the years, I have seen things done, the majority of things done in the North End, I would call poorly, some projects done very well, and that is my concern. I mean, I'm thankful that that house can be reborn, it's been sitting forever. How it's done is the issue. Code issues, you need a two-hour separation between units, doing that in older homes can be a challenge, means of egress from bedrooms. Code issues definitely come into play when you're converting a single-family home into a two-family home, and I can tell you from experience that many of these conversions in the North End do not meet code by any, by any means, and that's just because they've been done over long periods of time. Aesthetically, also very important, it is in the historic district, I will, as a matter of record, say that I am the architect on the HDC. I have seen projects done in the North End that deviated from what we've approved in the HDC. I've seen projects or work done in the North End that never showed up before the HDC. So either there's a relevance to our district, our historic district, or there isn't. So, all I ask for any given project in the HDC, or even in Nashua, is that the persons doing the project bring their A-game, because in too many cases in this city, it's not happening, just not happening, we have no cohesive design strategy in the city of Nashua. So, please, let's endeavor to start something, you know, where we get excellent projects one after the other, and that's my comments.
Well, thank you for your service on the HDC, are there any questions for Mr. Vorbach? You silenced us all, well, thanks, no questions for you, you could have a seat?
Yep.
I'll just ask one more time, was there anybody else with opposition to the proposal of fourteen Abbott? All right, seeing on Mr. Crowley, you've been following along, if you'd like to speak to us about what your thoughts are and what we've heard for opposition?
I appreciate the, the comments on, on both sides. Let me just start with, to the left of fourteen Abbott is twelve Abbott, it's a two-family. To the right of fourteen Abbott, I believe, is sixteen, eighteen, I'm not sure the exact address, but the house to the immediate right is at least a four-unit, I think it's a five-unit. The house diagonally across from fourteen Abbott is several units, I'm not sure, I think it's definitely more than a two, I'm gonna say it's a four or five, maybe even more. The house directly across the street are condos, but it's two units, it's a building with two units, but they were separated into condos at one point, so virtually every house that surrounds it is a multifamily. The bedroom count is not changing, the parking is not changing, I could have, I could rent that house as a single-family and have a lot of people living in there in a five-bedroom, it's gonna be no different than if I had two families living in there. The parking's not gonna change, there is a garage, I've had three cars in that driveway, the garage is dilapidated, it'd be all fixed up, you park in one, and the parking does not change on the outside, there's definitely two cars behind that can fit in there. But again, my, the point that I'm making is that, that the parking's not gonna change, the bedroom count's not gonna change, the number of people isn't gonna change than what's already allowed there. Regarding the, the craftsmanship in the work, I mean, I think that's totally a separate discussion, everything that I've done, you can ask anyone in the city, has been permitted and has been successful. As I mentioned, the board has approved several projects identical to this, very close to this property within the last year, so feel free to talk to anyone in the city, on the building department that I've worked with, all inspections, all the electrical, all the plumbing, everything was done properly. Regarding the fire code, I've done all that with garages, and whatever's needed, we've done. So, I think that point is, is very well-taken, and we take, you know, pride in what we do, but I, you know, the point of the, the point of this here is that it's an approved, the ordinance has already approved a two-family, so the two-family is not really, you know, I heard the, the discussions about, you know, the single families and trying not to go to a two-family, but it's, it is allowed a two-family in the ordinance. So we're just talking the land, and as I mentioned, on the land, there's nothing changing on the outside of the land, so it's, it's virtually not changing. So the options, in terms of value, I think a renovated two-family is gonna really help the, the property value, considering everything else there around it is multifamily. If I leave it as a single-family, it's not gonna get near the renovation, near the update, and it's gonna stay a single-family. I'm also a licensed real estate agent, I'm very aware of trying to sell a single-family or multifamily area, it's very difficult. If you're looking to buy a house with a family, you tend to want to be with other single-family houses, you don't tend to want to buy a single-family and live in multifamily environments. So that's, I mean, that's kind of the argument that I would make, that it, it will definitely improve the value. The houses that the board has approved prior, be happy to submit the, the resale value compared to what it was worth, substantially higher when I convert it to a two-family in a multifamily market. I'd be happy to provide that information to anyone if they, they want those details, but, so, I guess in, in summary, there's really nothing that's changing, other than improving the, the area, I think it's a financial hardship to leave it as a single-family, as, as it was mentioned by the opposition, it's been sitting there for a long time in some serious bad shape, I mean, it's, it's really bad for the neighborhood right now, and the motivation for a single-family is not going to just, it's not gonna be that, the market doesn't support it, so.
All right, thanks, Mr. Crowley, any questions? We have a question for you.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
And in the interest of openness and transparency, I'm the vice chair of the Historic District, so I know Mr. Vorbach well.
Thank you, yes.
Have you had to bring this through the Historic District Committee?
I have not, because there was no changes to the outside, that was, that was what I was told, and looking at what I read, as long as you're not changing the outside, that you can go ahead, and I think when I talked to Carter about it, I believe I had discussed that, or I don't know if I ended up talking to him, no, I left you a message, and you left me a message back, but I did inquire about that, and I'd be more, if I had to, if I was under the impression I had to, it would absolutely applied, but I was under the impression from calling the city and from looking what I read, that I didn't have to go in and, and as long as I wasn't changing anything on the outside of the property, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowley? Thanks, you could, you could have a seat.
Thank you.
One of you two has the right to, to come back to address one, so Mr. kinda, he's pointing at you, so, Mr. Storer, you're up at bat here, again, if you could just give us your name, so we know on the recording.
Martin Storer, nine A Abbott Street. Okay, so I, I neglected to mention, Mr. Crowley didn't mention, but I neglected to mention also that on, you know, there's two, there's two entrances to the house, one is on Greeley Street, which is a little street that goes between Abbott and Merrimack and down to the North Common Park, and the other's Abbott Street. So on, I neglected to mention what we're single-family on Greeley Street there, okay, so, across from fourteen is a single-family on Greeley Street, and behind, sort of behind on, on the corner of Merrimack Street, the next house down, which is a Merrimack Street address, I think it's seventeen Merrimack, is a single-family. On Merrimack Street, from Greeley Street out to Amherst Street, it's mostly single-families, okay, there are some multifamilies as well, there's a public housing unit on one corner of Merrimack and Greeley, there's a multifamily, there's a couple of multifamilies next to that one on Merrimack Street, which is, you know, a little street parallel to Abbott Street, and going down towards, going away from Greeley Street, away from Amherst Street, there are, there are some more single-family houses. So, that's, you know, it's sort of, it's sort of a mixed, more of a mixed bag, and as far as the, you know, I don't, I don't think that the, you know, possible hardship of selling a single-family versus, or, or, or selling a single-family or renting a single-family versus a multifamily is, is germane at all here.
All right.
I think it speaks to the, the legal criteria. And finally, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the, quote, the ordinance permits a multifamily house, well, it doesn't permit a multifamily house, because it doesn't have enough footprint, so, my, you know, my, my position would be that these rules are, are there for a reason, and to, you know, give a variance is, you know, for, you know, when, when Mr. Crowley's already bought the house, and, you know, taking his chances, whatever, is just, you know, to, to, to give a variance for this is to say that the rule for the footprint, you know, against overcrowding, I assume is the purpose, is just almost null and void. You know, he, Mr. Crowley can use it as a single-family house.
All right.
My, my, my issue is that, you know, it's, it doesn't meet the, the proper requirements from a multifamily house, and I, I think my property values will, will diminish rather than increase, because of the overcrowding.
All right, thanks, Mr. Storer, any questions? Hold on a second, we're all set. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Who would like to jump in first? Ms. Vitale?
I'll always say something. So, you know, I was trying to look at the other multifamily houses in that general area, and the question before us is if we're going to allow a two-family dwelling, which we know is allowed, on the size of property that it's on, so going around the area, that I believe that there's, and I didn't, I don't know exactly, because I didn't go back and check every single one, but there appears to be other properties that would meet the fact that they're, they're two-family on a property that's smaller than what would be required if they were, you know, gonna be re-looked at today. So I'm, I'm, you know, looking at parking, four or five cars, you know, I'd have to see it finished, it's, you know, not really at that point right at the moment, but the applicant has stated that there's enough parking for two units there, that he's going to be redoing the garage, which will be a plus. The house has been vacant, I would have to, to go on the testimony that, you know, having a single-family and selling it and buying it in an area with multifamily is more difficult. I, I would tend to be in approval of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I'm kind of waffling on, and I think that my major issue is that the house itself is smaller than the multifamily, than the other multifamily houses in, in the neighborhood, ignoring the square footage of the lot, which is what we're, we're being asked to look at. I mean, yes, there are, there are multifamily houses in that neighborhood, they, from, at least from what I can tell, they tend to be larger houses than this particular property. That said, there are multifamily houses there, it, I, I can't speak to building codes and things like that about whether it can be converted properly, but we have granted similar requests in the past, and I don't see this as materially different.
All right, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually kind of struggling too, because, I mean, part of the reason I was asking about the previous uses, you know, we've oftentimes also gotten these when, whether legally or not, or some historical basis, there was multiple, multifamily usages. In this case, it seems that it's been quite some time, if it ever was, so it, that kind of, to me, that argument kind of fades, fades back. Now, the flip of all that is that, I kind of, as I try to kind of eyeball this, and based on some of the testimony both applicant and Mr. Storer had, you know, there's, it seems that a lot of the density where there are the multifamilies here are kind of running, you know, kind of perhaps similar, some of these are four and five units, you know, so, actually even, you know, actually even Mr. Storer's property, single-family, the density, he's got a single-family home on a four, four thousand square foot lot, so it, there's, you know, this is a denser part of this RB zone, and we've seen that before as well, where I think sometimes, you know, these, we're dealing with a zone that's got kind of the ideal definition, but the reality is, we get to some of these neighborhoods where the, the true density of, of most of the surrounding properties is not meeting that, and then you have the one property here and there that does, so. Then, you know, the- that does. So, then, you know, the other part of it is, as Mr. Crowley said, there's the five bedrooms. It's, the kind of intensive use is not necessarily going to be significantly different if it's used as a single-family five-bedroom versus two-family five-bedroom total. Although I know there's sometimes the argument that that, even two families can still just generally bring a more intense use than dividing one family into that many bedrooms. So, and I guess also the square footage that's required versus what's existing is fairly far apart. So, those are, those are the things that are, they're all kind of, I've kind of, again, struggling a bit with this. So, kind of, I want to hear what other people's thoughts and reasonings are.
Obviously, we're always concerned about what, you know, people who live in the neighborhood, you know, view the property. And there's, you know, there's a lot of good history there. And I appreciate that. You know, when I looked at the house several times, you know, the first thing I thought was, it's going to be a side-by-side type thing. And now that that matters, and then as, as the applicant was talking, you know, and then I had looked at the house, you know, it appears to me there were some additions put on at one time. So, you know, really don't know what the intent was back whenever, but obviously, for whatever reason, you know, it was a large enough family living there. There was five bedrooms. But now knowing that, you know, from testimony, what the applicant is saying, and again, we don't have anything else to dispute that, but, you know, he's the one who's, you know, looked at the interior and kind of has done this before. So, I have to give somewhat credit to the fact that it may appear that at one time, maybe, maybe it wasn't set up that way, but there was an intent to do that. Regardless of that, you know, again, we talk about the intensity of the neighborhood, as Mr. Shaw brought up, and, you know, I look at, you know, as I drove around and I look at this again, yes, there are single, some single families, and there's also multifamilies on smaller lots than this. So, you know, and we, when we consider this, you know, we're really asking, you know, whether the variance is going to enable the owner to use the land, the proposed use of the land, applicant's proposed use of the property. So, you know, it's not a financial thing, but obviously, the house has been vacant for a good length of time. And obviously, for whatever reason, it's not working as a single-family. The applicant's coming in front of us, seeking relief on square, on the square footage of the lot. I guess for me, I see it very more plainly and have support for the application. You know, the parking, I know that gets brought up. The applicant's saying there's five spaces. You know, we've had this discussion before. We're not the ones who go park and we have to move cars. But if there's five spaces for parking, and want to include the garage, and he's testified the garage is going to be fixed, then that's there. Five bedrooms is not changing, exterior's not changing. So, to me, there is not, that the impact of this change, other than it being a two-family, I guess, from the impact standpoint, we're not adding bedrooms. And it appears to me that, that most likely would be the same intense type of use as it would be a single-family, is my, is my take on it. And, you know, we're not on a crowded lot here in, in respect to other applications we've looked at in the past. So, I guess very simply, I guess I find support for it. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with Mr. Boucher. I know the neighborhood well. And there's, Mr. Store was correct. The one, part of the neighborhood looks like it's all two families. And then as you move up and you come to where the road looks like it's going to fork, and it goes up, and it goes into Merrimack Street, you'll see more one families. But it is in keeping with the neighborhood as it looks, the house as it looks. When you look at it, I think your logical assumption is that it's a two-family, because of the way it presents itself to Mr. Vorback's comments. I would love to see it remain historically accurate, so that the city keeps some of its historic charm. That's why it's part of the Historic District. I find support for this project. I understand the concerns, and I think that a well-maintained, well-done renovation is going to bring value, as opposed to an empty building and left to disrepair. I think the neighbors, all the neighbors in the neighborhood would prefer to have somebody there. The other side of the coin is an empty building attracts things, situations, that are not always the best. And so, renovation, and again, in keeping with the neighborhood, the ordinance allows it. Yes, it's a smaller footprint, as Mr. Boucher and Mr. Shaw and Mr. Lionel referenced, and so did Ms. Vitale. People are doing it, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be well done. I think it'll be fine.
Thanks.
In my humble opinion.
You know, I find a very enticing thing about this application is that if it were approved, I have every confidence that the applicant would follow through, and it would be a sharp-looking place, like back to a compliment to the neighborhood, like it isn't right now. You know, I guess, on the other hand, I, in terms of the density question, just to clarify, when we, some, you know, we've kind of heard tonight, well, it's permitted. Well, two families are permitted in the RB zone if there's enough, if there's enough lot coverage. I just wanted to clarify that. So, the RB zone permits it, but this doesn't have enough lot size, and that's why we're here. So, it's kind of both. It's permitted in RB zone, but there's not a lot size, so we're here. So, in that matter, it's not permitted. I just wanted to get that on the record to make it, because it kind of came across, like, what are we doing here in the first place if it's permitted? But I, my sense from the walk-around and what I've heard tonight is, I do feel that, it was mentioned from somewhere, somebody had mentioned that the two families in this area are generally bigger lots. And I do find that to be the case. And my opinion, you've probably heard me say it before, is granted, there's five bedrooms in that unit, and it's going to be five bedrooms, one way or the other. I do feel that a two-family is a more intense use than, than a single-family. Just my opinion. I know there's other folks who say, hey, five bedrooms is five bedrooms, and there's really not much of a difference. But I, it's a tough one for me, but I'm struggling to find support for it, with the lot size being so much, you know, low, you know, getting down to fifty percent of what it should be. That's just my opinion. I'm not trying to place anything heavy-handed. And I didn't know if anybody else wanted to jump in, you know, since we've kind of gone around here. Does anybody else have any comments they want to say, one way or the other? Mr. Shaw?
I mean, the one, one thing I wanted to note is, at least, you know, the, some of those immediately adjacent multifamilies at, like, number eighteen and seventeen-nineeen Abbott Street, those are the ones, at least that Mr. Crowley cited, were the four or five, each of those. So, you know, and so, to me, that kind of starts to equal out more so. So, I wasn't as, it'd be one thing if those were just two, two-family on those really large lots.
Yep.
You know, looking across the street at that condo, it's definitely bigger, but it's still only pushing nine thousand square feet. So, it, you know, there's definitely where there are the multifamilies. They're not meeting the density either. So, I guess it's, I feel like it's really kind of, you know, kind of a little tricky. But to me, it's, so I guess maybe that's the thing. It's not obvious that this would be very, very different than what's going on there. But it also might be just a little bit skewing more to a greater intensity than some of the other properties, but not necessarily all of them. So.
Yeah. And Ms. Vitale?
Yeah, and I, you know, I, looking at it as the whole lot, and the, and the, talking about the parking and everything, one thing I'd want to ensure is that the owner would not allow that parking area for the, for the people within, you know, that are going to be rented to spill over into what would be the open space of that property. So, because of the way the position is of the building and the garage, I look at it as that there's, could be, you know, usable open space. But I wouldn't want to see that parking extended into.
Kind of pave over the whole lawn, you're saying? Okay. Mr. Lionel, any thoughts?
Just a comment. Two-family would tend, would tend to mean two, two adults or two sets of adults. And that, that's certainly a more intensive use than a single-family with, usually, for a house of this, this size, number of bedrooms, several children typically. But it, this is just an observation.
I just would, I think we've all kind of spoken our opinion. Would, Mr. Boucher, would you like to hazard a motion? See where it goes?
I'd like to make a motion for Crowley Acquis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Crowley Acquisitions Group LLC, addresses fourteen Abbott Street. They are requesting a variance for a minimum lot area of twelve thousand four hundred forty-five square feet required, six thousand five hundred forty-six square feet existing to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. That is, in the RB zone, code section is one ninety-sixteen, table sixteen-three. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We spoke of many different things in, in our discussion. The fact that this is a mixed area, single-family, multifamily. We spoke about intensity of some of the lots, where some are a little larger, some are smaller. And what we're referring to is the existing square footage that does not meet current code, but of the existing multifamilies from two and up in, in the area. We found that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. There was discussions on opinions on whether or not that that would or would not. But again, nothing was submitted showing any values of any, any data, data that would show values of one or another, even though the applicant did offer testimony or offer to provide us with previous projects of his. But again, I find that, I don't think it's really germane to this specific piece of property. It's not contrary to public interests, and substantial justice would be served.
Motion on the table to approve. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. McKay, discussion on the motion? I know Ms. Vitale had made a suggestion of, I guess I would take it as a stipulation, let me just rephrase it, to keep the parking area as it's currently situated and not increase the parking area into, I don't know if you call it the front lawn or whatever, but...
So, I would say that the stipulation would be, on this piece of property, that the parking would be off of Greeley Street and, I mean, Greeley Street and not off of Abbott Street.
Sure.
Obviously, what we don't know, I didn't measure the driveway, they have a right to have a twenty-four-foot wide driveway. But again, that, if it's anything more than that, they would have to come back. But right now, we would say that the parking is limited to the location that's currently existing off of Greeley Street.
So, I think that's an amendment to the motion, that the parking would be situated on Greeley Street. And would you second that amendment, Ms. McKay, so she has?
Yes.
Any other discussion on that motion? A show of hands in favor of that motion. So, that's four. And in opposed is myself, so that's one. So, that, that carries. So, your application's been approved. Keep in mind the thirty-day window of appeal. You're probably familiar with that. If you're not, Mr. Falk can fill you in on that. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number three. And we're going to take a five-minute recess, folks, a five-minute recess, and then we'll be back on. be back on.
That's what we do in the State House. But it has to be a woman that says it. I don't know why that protocol is, but it is.
All right, we're ready to get back into session. Let's open the public hearing on case number four. The owner is Shirley Brothers. The address is 6 Green, Greenfield Drive. The request is a variance to encroach 12 feet into the 40-foot required rear yard setback to replace a 12-by-16 open deck with a 12-by-16-foot sunroom. Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. Feel free to pull that down a little. There you go. And if you could give us your name and address and walk us through your application?
Shirley Brothers, 6 Greenfield Drive. I'm here to put up a sunroom in place of 12-by-16 deck. The deck is, the deck was there when I bought the house. I've been there about 28 years. It's becoming kind of decrepit and rundown. And as I get older, shoveling the snow off, it's getting to be a real pain. And I would like to be able to sit out in the room in the wintertime and sit in the sun and whatnot like that. And I think I've got quite a bit of property in the backyard and quite a bit of privacy. And it's not going to encroach, it's going to be the exact same size as the deck is. And it's going to go into the roof line. It's not going to go above the roof line. And I believe it will improve the value of my property and also present a nice-looking room besides the deck that's getting kind of decrepit.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Brothers?
Only question I have is, is if the proposed sunroom is exactly the same footprint as the existing deck, does she need a variance?
Well, she was, since she was removing the whole thing and building something that was an, an open deck versus an air-conditioned, livid, lived-in, heated space, it tells us it's a different use. And so she would have to come in for a variance for that.
Okay. I was just curious.
All right. Any other questions from Ms. Brothers? No?
If it was going from a deck to a deck, like if she wanted to take this down and build another deck like this, she wouldn't have to come back. But since it's roofed and all that, that's the big thing, is it's roofed.
Okay.
I think we're all set, Ms. Brothers. You could have a seat.
Thanks.
We'll see what comes up. Is there anybody else to speak with, in favor of this application? Sir, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address and let us know what's on your mind?
My name is John La Monday. I live at 8 Greenfield Drive. I'm Shirley's neighbor. We've been there since 91, so we've been neighbors for, forever. I think it's in, it fits in with the neighborhood. There's a lot of houses in the neighborhood that have had renovations done and have built up. I think it'd be aesthetically very pleasant.
All right. Could I trouble you to spell your name so we get it right?
Monday, L.A. Monday.
L.A. Monday.
Like the day of the week.
All right. L.A. Monday. Any questions for Mr. L.A. Monday?
Except now I'm singing Monday, Monday in my head.
We're all set. Thanks for coming tonight. Anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed deck at 6 Greenfield Drive? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seen questions, concerns, once, twice, sold? No questions or concerns or opposition? Close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? Maybe we'll go the other way? I'll jump out first, if you don't mind. You know, we've had a, this place, this house has had a deck of the same size for quite some time. I think it's very impactful when, and a butler comes and speaks in favor of it. My only concern, I, when I looked at it, I couldn't see it from the street, so it didn't seem like a big deal, but you don't know how it appears to folks right next door. But I think it speaks volumes, one of the butlers in favor of it and, you know, says it'll pick the, pick to, pick the neighborhood up. So I'm, I'm all good with it. Ms. McKay?
Ditto. I, I concur with what you say. The neighbor did speak. It's, they've been neighbors 26 years. It's the same size, same footprint. The only difference is the roof. She doesn't have to shovel. And it's an aging deck, so it's an improvement. I concur, sir.
All right. Mr. Boucher?
It's pretty straightforward to me. I support the application.
Shaw?
Pretty much likewise. The other thing is just a note. I mean, the house is only 46 feet off of the rear yard set line, so there's only six feet to work with without going into the setback. So that's the other thing. It's impractical to put anything of any size there without having some incursion, so. And these lots basically are kind of set up, they're not, they're not that deep, so.
Okay. Mr. Lionel?
I have no issues with this.
Ms. Vitale?
I agree. I would support this issue.
All right. Mr. Lionel, would you like to make a motion?
Oh, okay. You always pick one. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance requested by Shirley Brothers, address 6 Greenfield Drive. The request is to encroach 12 feet into the required 40-foot required rear yard setback to replace a 12-by-16 open deck with a 12-by-16 sunroom. Variance is needed to, to implement this request. The house is situated so that there's not much room in the back, and the proposed sunroom is exactly the same size as the existing deck. It's within the spirit and intent of, of the ordinance, and we have testimony from neighbors that it would improve property values, not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice to the owner would be served.
All right. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So Ms. Brothers, your application is approved. Just remember, there's that 30-day window of appeal, and we wish you good luck with your project. All right. Let's close the public meeting on case number four. And moving right along, open up the public hearing on case number five. The owner is Laura Witz. The address is 107 Groton Road. The request is a variance to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent is allowed, 83.79% is proposed to construct a 20-foot by 34-foot in-ground swimming pool. Who's here to speak on this application? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone. And you can both come up as, just identify yourselves. I think we'll.
Is that good?
Yep. We can hear you loud and clear.
Gary Witz. Live at 107 Groton Road in Nashua. My wife, Laura. And I don't know if you people know where that is, but it's in the very southwest corner of Nashua. We have lived in Nashua. We've owned a home since 1993. This is our third home. We bought it in June of 2000. It was a seller's market. It wasn't the ideal home. We liked the property because it was remote, and we have a dog. So we knew it was going to require some TLC, and the building itself is a ranch. The house is a ranch. That's how it came, and it was an outbuilding, size of a two-car garage, 24 by something. And I think what was, there was, it was electricity brought out to it. I think the person that was there before was using it as a welding shop. I don't know. But my property, I only have one neighbor. The southwest, the southern property line is a state line. You can see all the granite markers, there's a head out across the state. Behind me is the rail trail. And everyone is, if you go to my neighbor, he has a pool. The next-door neighbor, he has a pool, et cetera and et cetera. And over the years, we've done a good job of improving on the house and improving on that back building and the house. And when people come into Nashua, I like to say it's the first house in Nashua, they're impressed by the home. People say, "I'll be out there mowing." I love that house. We've done a lot of work on it. The last thing that has to be done is the backyard landscaping. Unfortunately, a few years ago, I developed a disability, and I can no longer travel. So I'm pretty much stuck to the house. And I want to have a little bit of recreation to enjoy the house, enjoy the property, and part of that recreation of the backyard. So putting in a swimming pool would, would be good for us.
All right. Is that it with your testimony?
I believe so, unless anyone has any questions.
We'll find out. Are there any questions for Mr. or Mrs. Witz? I guess I have a question for you. So is, just, is your kennel, is that an existing business, or is that just a?
No, it's personal.
Personal, okay.
It's not a business. It's, it is personal.
All right. Very well.
Something that we did to improve that back building, that we did to meet with the town requirements.
Yep.
In terms of having dogs, shade requirements, cleanliness, water requirements, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
It was all permitted. The, the guys that came out and inspected it were very impressed with the workmanship.
I was always curious, because I got to tell you, I ride my bike by there all the time.
Oh, yeah.
I rarely get by without your, one of your dogs picking up on my presence. But it's, it's no bother. I'm just curious. Any other questions for the Witz? Seems pretty simple so far. I think we're all set. You could have a seat, and we'll see, see what we have.
It's on about an acre and a third of land. So it does have quite a bit of land.
All right. All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed in-ground pool? Anyone with questions or concerns? No questions or concerns? So I'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Boucher?
I think it's one of these cases where, you know, we're looking at a large piece of property. We always talk about this, right? Large piece of property, house is not mansion on there, and so this is where we get the percentage. So again, I, I'll, I'll stay right in front that I support the application as it stands. Again, large piece of property. There's nothing really that I can see here that would give me any cause. Is there anything else that I can say?
Very well. Mr. Shaw?
Pretty much likewise. It's not an unreasonable kind of intensive use outside and away from the house itself.
Mr. Lionel?
I, I agree. It's a, a big property and a big open space in the back of the house. Seems reasonable to me.
Ms. Vitale?
100% agree.
I'm in agreement with you folks also. Ms. McKay?
Yeah, I support it also. It's a huge piece of property, just as Mr. Boucher, Mr. Shaw said. Small home, big, small footprint for the house, big footprint for the yard, and they want to enjoy their property. And it will do just that. I concur.
I guess one other thought I had is that, you know, when I saw the 89%, I was, I was thinking, wow, this is a, that's got to be really dense. And I tell you, I'd seen this place from the back hundreds of times, which is just a fence, because that's all you see. You know, but from the front, it's, it's a pretty open space, as the testimony is, and it, it set my fears aside. I'm like, is it the pools behind the house? You're not even going to know it from the street. So I, I think it's all good and it doesn't amount to any overcrowding, even though that percentage is a little north of 89%. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll do that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Laura Witz, 107 Groton Road. She is requesting a variance to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% allowed, 83.79% proposed to construct a 20-by-34-foot in-ground swimming pool. It is in the R40 zone. Code section is 190-264, under definition of use accessory. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. Specifically, we discussed the, the sheer size of the property, as testified, is over an acre, and it has a modest ranch on it with an outbuilding, so therefore the large percentage of overage. The benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served.
Motion on the table to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So that's approved. So good luck on your pool project, and don't forget the 30-day window of appeal. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number five. I think we're good to keep going. So I'll open the public hearing on case number six. The owner is Jane Poirier. The address is For Loop Avenue. It's a special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit and also a variance to exceed the maximum area of the accessory dwelling unit. 750 square feet is required and 864 feet is proposed. Hi, good evening.
Hi, how are you? I'm Jane Poirier, P-O-I-R-I-E-R, at For Loop Ave in Nashua. I'm looking to put in an apartment into the bottom, which is considered the in-law because it's family. It'll be for my daughter and my grandson. There is the, what do you call it? There is like the water and there's a compartment for the utilities and stuff down in the basement also that I don't know if they've taken into account. But it's a, the thing was three-quarters finished when I had bought it. I'm just adding in the kitchen and the bathroom. And I've made the one big bedroom into two bedrooms for the baby and my daughter. I would like to know if this would be allowed. I'm not going outside of my land or, I do have a very large lot also. It's like a two lot for my home.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lionel has a question for you.
Looking at your, your drawing, is this a, an exit from the basement directly to the outside, a door?
Yes.
Do you have another question, or you?
I, I, I'm just not completely familiar with what all of the rules are. It really hasn't, it has not too much to do with, with what we're having, but in terms of egress from, from bedrooms, there are, there are rules about that. I just don't remember exactly what they are.
Well, it's going to be up to the building department and fire marshal, but you can't, you can't just keep going through bedroom after bedroom after bedroom. You have to have, you know, each bedroom has to go to a hallway to get to access outside.
They do have that.
Okay, yeah.
It would have that.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like you have all that. There's supposed to be two means of egress and egress, you know, per, per unit. So it looks like she's got one with the stairs and one that goes outside, as far as I can tell by the drawing.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I have a question for you, and that is on your drawing here, like you mentioned, you recently purchased this place and.
Yes, I did.
You said it was mostly done, but you're adding a, what, a kitchen, your proposal is that?
They had done, they had a living room and like a play-type area. They only had one room that wasn't finished. They had that for storage. And then the bedroom was like a double-sized bedroom. It was huge, and it had a living room in it.
So the 864 square feet, is your proposal enlarging the footprint of the house?
No.
Or you're?
That's what's in the house.
So the, that, this, is it, is it the first floor you said? So the first?
It's actually considered the basement to me, because it's the way you'd walk in if you did that way. I have my own separate entrance upstairs.
Okay.
And we do have the common. And we do have the common stairway that I just have the door closed.
So this 864 square feet is what's currently existing in the basement floor?
Yes, exactly. I'm not expanding it at all.
Not expanding it at all. All right, that answers my question on that. Any other questions? We don't have any other questions, Ms. Poirier, so you could have a seat and see what comes up. Is there anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody with questions or concerns? Hold on a second. I'm just wondering if you... Did you have...
I'm interested.
Okay, you're an interested party, that's fine.
My name is...
Okay, fine. If you had any questions, you're welcome. If not, you could just, you know, listen along. I just, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
If you'd like, sure, come on up. And you might have to lift that microphone up or just pull it out. And if you could just give us your name and what question you have.
Yeah, my name's Maurice Renaud, and I live at 4 Parker.
Could I trouble you to spell that one?
Renaud.
Renaud.
And the first name?
The first name again? First name?
Maurice.
Maurice, all right.
R-I-C-E.
Got it, thanks. Thanks. What's on your mind?
The only issue is, I know we have a high-water table in that area. And the only thing I've noticed at that property is ponding between the two neighbors to their septic system, their leach fields.
Uh huh.
And I know they're going to add more people in the building, so that's going to add to the load.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're planning on doing any kind of corrections to that area.
Well, we can, if we just, we hear your question loud and clear and we'll, remember I was asking to address us with the questions of Ms. Poirier? It's a very valid question. So your observation is there's a high-water table and, you know, there's just a question of more people, more load on the septic.
Oh, yes.
You got a valid concern.
I mean, there are wells in the area.
Yeah.
I'm not on that well, but, you know, it's something we should look into.
Yep.
For health reasons.
Did you have other questions or concerns?
No, that's the only issue I have, really.
And I was just curious, are you on septic or well? Where's the water end?
I'm on a Nortesian well right now.
Okay. Is that whole street there, Elmer, is that all well? Elmer, is that all? Or is...
If you go down Elmer and you, there's Loop Ave is your first right, second right is Parker Drive.
Okay. Is there any water service there or is everybody on wells there?
No, there's no water, you know?
No water.
It's on Main Dunstable, but, I mean, on Ridge Road, but not in our neighborhood.
All right.
So...
Thanks. Are there any questions for Mr. Renada?
What's your address again?
Oh, I'm sorry, your address again?
4 Parker Drive.
4 Parker. All right. Well, thanks. Let's just, you could have a seat and we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah. And Ms. Poirier, if you could come back and, so the, there's the observation that you think there's, you know, there's a high-water table. Are you, are you on a septic or well there?
Yes.
Okay. And...
I don't use the water to drink over there. It's basically for dishes and cleaning and stuff like that.
Okay. Do you have any reason to believe that your septic is going to be challenged, I'm wondering, with this?
There were five people living there before me.
Oh, okay.
It was a family of five.
I see. All right. Well, thank you for that information. I didn't know if anybody else had any questions for Ms. Poirier. We're all set. You could have a seat. Mr. Renad, so testimony is previous to her ownership. Her testimony is there were five folks living there. So I...
[inaudible].
I didn't know if you had any, any follow-up questions from that? Are you okay at this point?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any follow-up questions or testimony? Okay. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the case, Ms. Vitale?
It's a hundred and some, not that much over the square footage that would be allowed. You know, it's the whole basement. You're not going to break off a little piece of it to draw it into the size that the, that the code requires. I think it's a reasonable request. I think some of the questions that were brought up will be covered by other departments. But as far as the special exception, I'm okay with that.
All right. Mr. Lionel?
I agree with what Ms. Vitale said.
Shaw?
Concur also.
I agree, and I'm just assuming that the applicant agrees or is aware of this special exception, right? The accessory dwelling unit part of this.
In fact, I'd probably almost like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing and just clarify that question. Thank you for reminding me. Is there a second? Okay, and all in favor? Ms. Poirier, if you could, if I could trouble you to come back to the microphone. There's nine criteria for the accessory dwelling units. Are you familiar with those? No. Why don't we just take a moment and tick through them?
I'll give her my copy.
Okay, yeah. So the first one is the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed 750 square feet. Well, you're here asking for a variance for 846 square feet, but, you know, your testimony is that it's the basement, you're not expanding the house, and by your testimony, I think you'd agree that it's, is clearly incidental.
Correct.
Number two, is it the accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling? And so you're nodding head?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just for the record. And the accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling. And then there's some entrance and exits requirements there. If you want to just take a look through that and see if you meet that, I'd just like to get a yes on record.
Yes.
And then the owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence for a period of at least five years following the granting of the certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
And number five, this is a long one, I'll just speak the first sentence. The owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees. And the covenant shall read, and I'm going to boil that down to say that it's an accessory dwelling unit and not a two-family.
Correct.
Number six is that one additional off-street parking is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house. Do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And number seven, an interior door, I think you spoke with your staircase, an interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
And then number eight, the single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership.
Correct.
And number nine, the accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housings.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. I'd like to close, reclose the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for clarifying that. I feel more comfortable if the applicant understands, you know, especially the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a two-family. Thank you for reminding me.
So with that, obviously, we have that on record. I support the application and we're not going to, in this case here, I don't believe slicing a small piece of the basement to achieve this is feasible or, not feasible, it's required. And again, from the street, no one's going to know. We wouldn't know the difference between the hundred and something square feet difference in this, in this piece of property. So I support the special exception, the variance.
Okay?
I agree. It's just not warranted for 114 square feet. Concur with all the rest of the board.
And I concur with the testimony also. Mr. Shaw, would you like to...
Are we doing the special exception or the variance? Which one are we doing first?
I think we should do them separately.
Okay. I just need to know which one we're doing first.
I think we should do the variance first, yeah.
I have a motion for variance. Variants on behalf of Jane Poirier, address 4 Loop Avenue. The variance is to exceed maximum area of accessory dwelling unit where 750 square feet is allowed and 860 square, 864 square feet is proposed. This is in the R40 zone. I make a motion to approve this variance request. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. In this case, it's to do with accessory dwelling unit and the full use of the basement for this purpose is basically what causes this overage. The board does not feel that there would be any benefit to limit the owner to this square footage and basically negate any probably beneficial use of that hundred and some odd square feet of additional area that's kind of predefined by the basement itself. So it would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this. There's no negative impact on property values. There's, it's not contrary to public interest and it would serve substantial justice for the property owner. Again, I make the motion to approve this area variance.
Seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any other discussion on the motion of approval for the variance? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor, so that's approved.
All right, with that, I'd like to move on to, for the same applicant and address, the special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. And this is listed in the table of uses, section 190-32. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, will not overload public systems. Special regulations are fulfilled, the nine criteria as reviewed and provided in testimony by the applicant. And it will not impair the integrity or out-of-character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health morals or welfare of residents. So again, I move to approve this special exception.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel, who's quick on the draw. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's approved, Ms. Poirier, and we wish you good luck.
Video.
And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number six. We have some minutes before us that we didn't approve last time, and that was the minutes from August 8th, in which myself, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Shaw, and Mr. Lionel were here. I've taken a look at those... Yeah, you're all set, thanks. I've taken a look at those. I don't have any comments on them. Does anybody have any markups on them?
I didn't see anything.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve, I guess the four of us will be voting on it because the four of us were here. I'll make a motion to approve the August 8th, August 8th, 2017 minutes as proposed, seconded by Mr. Shaw.
Wait a minute. I, you're going too fast for me.
You were way behind.
I know, because I'm trying to catch up with all the paperwork and you guys are just talking. Okay, so this is the minutes?
Eight-eight minutes. Eight-eight.
Eight-eight.
Okay.
And the motion was by Courier, seconded by Shaw. Did I say a show of hands in favor?
Yes.
Was Shaw, Boucher, Lionel, and Courier, the four attendees of the meeting. We also have minutes. August 22nd. There were five of us here, myself, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Vitale, and Ms. McKay. I didn't see any changes needed. So I'll make, and I'm seeing nobody is indicating there's any changes, so I make a motion to approve the August 22nd, 2017 minutes as proposed, seconded by Mr. Shaw. And in affirmation of that is the five of us who are here, which is Courier, Boucher, Shaw, McKay, and Vitale. And then I think we had one other set of minutes.
No.
No. We only had two.
So we do have an agenda for the next meeting, and there's three cases on it. So I'm, we're going to look for any regional impact. Mr. Shaw sees no regional impact. Mr. Lionel is no. Mr. Boucher is no. And McKay and Courier are no. So I'd say by unanimous consent, there's no regional impact. Is there any other business to be brought before the board? Is that a show of hand to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I second that motion. All in favor? And we are complete at?
9:16.
9:16.